I'm Andy Duing. I'm the Executive Director here of Nineteen Carter. And I'd like to welcome you all tonight. We have a special forum for our school committee candidates. I think we're all excited that there's actually more than one candidate. That's unusual. So thank you, thank the candidates for coming forward and offering to take part in our town. And we're always grateful in our small towns when people come forward and say, "Yes, I would like to volunteer my time," because we know it's hundreds of hours. It's not too late, you can walk off the stage. Hundreds of hours, okay.
That's a lot.
Okay, so I am going to be moderating tonight. And I'm looking forward to having everyone participate. We're going to start with each of the candidates having three minutes to say who they are and why they are so interested in serving our towns. And then we're going to open it up to questions. And everyone's allowed to ask one question to start with. Just to make it easier, so that I don't have to cut somebody off, we're going to just limit all the questions to 90 seconds each. So I hope that's fine with everybody. And then we're going to let each of the candidates have 90 seconds each, too. So that way, we have lots of opportunities for questions and answers. I would like to just also suggest that since we have one candidate who's contributed a lot of time as a school committee member, Megan, and the other two have not been on the school committee, there's a range of who knows what here. So I would like all the questions to not be specific to what happened, but more general. So if you could reference perhaps a situation, but I'd like the question to be fair, so that everyone can answer it. So it's not just you asking Megan questions, basically. Does that make sense? Is that what we talked about, right?
That's exactly right, yeah.
Okay, so make it general. You can reference some things, but what you're basically trying to do, what we're all trying to do, myself included, is figure out who to vote for. So it's more fair if we can sort of find out their positions on things and what would they do in this kind of situation, so that they can all answer the question. All right, and since I'm in charge, I get to make the rules, and that's my role. So it's non-consensual. But I started asking you if that's okay. It's okay, right? Yes, thank you, good. And since this isn't a town building, this is an independent nonprofit, I get to throw people out. So anybody says anything that I don't like that's disrespectful is what I don't like. I can disagree, but disrespectful, no disrespect, no, no bad language, no rudeness. Otherwise, you're out. I'm my bouncer right here. She's going to throw you out. All right, I think we're all here to just enjoy meeting these wonderful candidates. And I trust you all will participate in that, in that good sense. All right, I think we're ready to go. Is there anything else that I forgot? No?
Just one thing. Lisa Mayer was unable to make it tonight due to a tragic death in her family. And I just want to make sure everyone is aware that she really wanted to be here, but she had some family emergency she had to deal with this week.
Thank you, Megan. I am so sorry to have forgotten that. We're sad that Lisa can't join us, and we know she would have loved to be here. She was planning on it. So I guess I should introduce the candidates. James Waite, Beth Mancini, and Megan Grill. And I'll let you guys introduce yourselves.
Okay, so I've written down my remarks. Thank you for inviting me tonight and taking the time to participate in the school committee candidate debate. For those of you that don't know me, and my name is Megan Grill, I'm currently the Chair of the Berlin-Boilston Regional School Committee. I've been a committee member since September of 2021, when I was one of two individuals appointed out of a group of six applicants. In addition to serving as Chair, I have previously served as Vice Chair as well as Assistant Treasurer of the District, and currently still hold the title of Assistant Treasurer. I've lived in Boyleston for more than 13 years and grew up right next door in Shrewsbury. My husband and I have a seven-year-old daughter and a nine-year-old son who both attend Boyleston Elementary School. In the time that I've served on the school committee, we have accomplished some amazing things for this school district. We navigated the district through the difficult COVID years and then played a role in problem-solving the aftermath of the pandemic. During my time on the committee, the district hired two successful full-time principals, one for Tohato and one for BES, hired a permanent superintendent after the retirement of Mr. Zanghi, as well as an interim superintendent after the retirement of Mrs. Costello. We added a middle school assistant principal at Tohato, shifted the schedule and resources to add both health and media classes to the elementary schools, added literacy and math coaches to the elementary schools, as well as a full-time athletic director to the high school. I was part of the teachers' contract negotiations in 2022, as well as a member of the Budget Subcommittee in 2023 and 2024. Just a little bit about my life outside of the BBRSD. I'm a Certified Public Accountant in the States of Massachusetts and Florida. I graduated with a BA in Accounting from Holy Cross and earned my MBA from the University of West Florida. For the past nine years, I've been working exclusively for my family-run business, providing income tax services for local clients. Before that, I spent nine years working as an auditor for large public accounting firms and then in corporate finance for software companies. Working on our tax practice has not only been challenging and educational for me, as I've had the opportunity to work with many different clients, but also fulfilling in being able to provide a helpful service to members of our community. Our firm is very much people-focused, working with clients to problem-solve and ensure their income tax returns are prepared timely and accurately. I was raised going to public school and was able to see through the countless hours of service that my parents both gave to the town of Shrewsbury how impactful community volunteers can be. I also learned that we must create opportunities for our children and not just sit back and demand it. I've been lucky to have flexibility in my day job, which has afforded me the opportunity to become involved in the community. In addition to the school committee, I have been a member and am currently the Treasurer for the Boyleston Education Collaborative. I've also been able to coach softball and soccer for my children, serve as Room Mother in both of my children's classrooms, as well as teach religious education at St. Mary of the Hills for first graders. I am here tonight for one main reason: the kids. I'm looking forward to continue to serve this community for the next four years on the school committee. Please consider voting for me for school committee on November 5th.
Hi, my name is Beth Mancini. I'm a Berlin resident who moved here nine years ago with my husband Peter and our two kids. The school has played a big part in our decision to move to Berlin from Leominster. Our first impressions of the town were through our interactions with the Berlin Memorial School staff. Mrs. Rappa telling us what time to really expect the bus, because she drove by Old Street every morning. Mrs. Flanagan, a first-grade teacher who came in during April vacation to meet my daughter. And Ms. Langjulier, who was a huge advocate for getting our preschool-aged son services that he would have struggled to receive in a larger district. We knew immediately that we had made the right choice for our family moving to Berlin and sending our kids to the district's public schools. Some personal information about me. I grew up in Ashland. I went to UMass Amherst for a year and a half before transferring to Worcester State, because that is the running theme of my life. UMass was too big, and I wanted to go someplace smaller. I graduated in 2003 with a degree in history that I did not use and worked at a Thearx subsidiary sales office for nine years, doing equipment building leasing. After I had a second child, I started working part-time at my in-law's small business, doing bookkeeping for them, and I've been there for 11 years. I began to consider running for school committee after sitting in the meeting the day after the budget failed at the Berlin Town Meeting. The meetings that followed before the second town meeting solidified my decision. I heard the members of the committee repeatedly saying they were listening to the feedback that they were receiving and that the next year would be different. Since there was a seat opening with Julie deciding not to run again, I decided that I would like a seat at the table to remind the committee of their promise to the communities. I like to consider myself a thoughtful person who has an open mind. While I certainly have my own opinions on topics, I'm not closed off to conversations that might change or alter my views. If I were to be elected to the school committee this year, my goal over the course of a four-year term would be to rebuild trust with the towns and develop a more cohesive working relationship that benefits everyone. The district is at a turning point, and from what I've seen from Acting Superintendent Ganem, he's setting us up for success with fresh eyes and ideas. I see great things for the district going forward, and I would like to be a part of it. Thank you.
My name is James Waite. I've been a Boyleston resident for about nine years now. I moved to town with my wife and then two children from Ireland, where we had lived for the previous nine years. I had been in Europe for about 14 years before deciding to move back to the States. In looking at where we wanted to live and build our lives, Boyleston oddly enough sort of really stood out for us. We were in rented accommodation for a while and looked at many towns in the surrounding area here in Massachusetts. And we could have gone anywhere, and we chose Boyleston to make our home, because we felt that Boyleston and the towns of Berlin, there's something special that happens here. It's the people, you know, it's the small-town, traditional American feel that we really liked and have bonded with. We worship at First Congregational Church in Boyleston. You'll find us there most Sundays. Since moving to town, we've had two more children. So two of my children were born in Boyleston. All technically Worcester, but born in Boyleston. And we really want to see good things happen for the town. My day job at the moment, I'm in a senior IT role for a Fortune 100 defense contractor. I've held similar IT roles in the US for medical device manufacturers. In Europe, I worked in IT engineering and business strategy consulting. Have seen lots of businesses from the inside. And very early in my career, I worked actually for two school districts, Sacramento City Unified School District and Sacramento, California. And while I was in Germany, I had the opportunity to work for DODIA, which is the Department of Defense Education Activity that runs and operates schools for our service personnel in Europe. In both those roles, I was in IT, as is sort of where I fit, as a data analyst, writing reports for Sacramento City Unified. You get to see sort of where the bodies are buried, what works and what doesn't, because it all comes out in the stats in the end, and managing infrastructure projects for DODIA in Europe. As a resident, I attend, you know, our town meetings. And coming from California, where I grew up, this style of New England direct democracy is a bit foreign to me. It's a bit more direct than we're used to in California, where things happen at a distance, you know, through various boards and committees, but without the direct voter-in-voter interaction. And I was surprised to see both how well it works, but also how emotive some of the arguments can be. And I was slightly disturbed by the emotiveness of some of the arguments as they've come up in relation to budgetary concerns. It's been my experience that when people become very emotional, often irrational arguments get lost. And I think I have seen that in these last budget cycles between Berlin and Boyleston. That is primarily what has led me to run today. So I would ask for your vote. I can promise to be transparent and honest. I find that I am, if anything, a bit too blunt at times. And are you not even resigned to point to that? And thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. We've heard the three candidates. Now I'm opening the floor to questions. And we have one for Peg. Start the timer, please.
Ready, go. During the October 8th school committee meeting, the interim finance director indicated that there were multiple bills that had not been paid since June 1st, 2024, including a $1,038,000 bill for health insurance. That was three months in arrears. Yes, it was voted at that meeting to approve it, but it was not a unanimous vote. During the same meeting, a $1.4 million shortfall was also discovered for FY '25, this year's current school budget. Undoubtedly, that information will impact FY '26. To me, this is a clear blatant mismanagement of money by the current school committee. The school committee comes to the town of Berlin two years in a row, asking for significant increases to the school budget, when it is clear with these two examples, the school committee cannot manage the money they are given. Without placing blame on Michael Wood, a financial person you hired after the firing of Nancy Koninski, who is currently suing the school committee, or blaming Cara Costello, since none of them are here to defend themselves from your accusations. Please be specific in the answers to explain the lack of accountability, lack of oversight, lack of ownership, and why should the current school committee be trusted to be re-elected?
Okay, so 90 seconds? Good job. So I thank you for your question, Peg. I'm a little bit struggling with its specificity. So can we, can you guys figure out how to answer that? Or no? Should we, you can, okay.
Yeah.
All right, then I'm not going to step out of it. So if you guys are good, then we'll just take turns, 90 seconds each. Maybe we start with this end of this time, if that's okay?
Thank you for your question. After watching the video of that meeting, I would have much the same question about why it is that, you know, bills have not been paid since June 1st, and why it seemed, if not surprising to others at the meeting, why that was the first time that it was being reported to them. Those are excellent questions. I haven't heard any good answers, and certainly the record seems to be relatively silent on that.
I don't really have any. I mean, it's obviously unacceptable. I mean, I don't have any more comment on that. I feel bad that I'm going to have to speak into my...
It's okay.
Peg, could you, is she allowed to repeat? Could you repeat the part of the question about the shortfall in the budget? I didn't catch that. I was trying to write really quick.
I know, I was trying to talk quick.
I know, it's okay. If you could just repeat that. I got the bills part, and I can speak to that.
Yeah, so it was a $1.4 million shortfall that was discovered for FY '25.
I don't recall that.
It was said by your interim director. I think it was Article III that he was referring to, that there was a discrepancy between the letter that was provided to the town of Berlin and what was actually existed. He referenced a budget.
So there's two things. There was a discrepancy between, for the assessment, the $1.4 million budget shortfall. I don't follow that. The discrepancy in the assessment letter is a different story. We can talk about that now if you want. Anyways, I agree with what the other two said. It's totally unacceptable that the bills haven't been paid. As you know, the school committee doesn't have any access to pay bills. The only thing that we have authority to do is to hire and fire the superintendent to approve the budget and to set policy. So unfortunately, you know, and I'm not trying to place blame, but I think the committee did their job. We had someone in there this summer that was an interim finance director. That party didn't pay bills. It was brought to our attention in August. That party is no longer here, and a new interim finance director started at the beginning of September. That person has been paying bills. The committee did vote to pay the bills. I agree with you, it's totally unacceptable. And I have a lot of confidence in the new team that's been brought in. But I think that's a huge part of why there's been so much turnover, is that the school committee is trying to hold people accountable. That's all I can say for you. As far as the discrepancy in the assessment, I don't know if we want to go down that rabbit hole, but there is a discrepancy in the assessment. The number that was voted at town meeting is actually different than what the school committee approved. I think the motion that was made on the town meeting floor was higher than the number that the school committee approved. I didn't make the motion, so I can't speak to that.
All right, next question. Mary.
I just want to, where are we at here? A clarification on Peg's question and Megan's response to it. I listened to the October 8th school committee meeting, where the temporary finance director, Daniel Dede, was describing his concerns. What Peg was referencing is respect to the fiscal '25 budget. So the assessment letter sent to Berlin had a general fund amount of $23 million and change. And what Mr. Dede said is the accounting software, which he views as the actual financial operation of the district, said $24,700,000 and change. So that's where he saw a deficit of $1.4 million. It was between what was put out there as the general fund budget and what the software internally actually showed. That was his point. Thank you, just to clarify.
Do you want me to respond to that, Mary?
Well, I don't know if it helps with your...
Yeah, it does. Thank you for clarifying that. It does help. So Dan is new and he's still learning the accounting software. And what Nancy used to do is she used to have the funds were all separate, and then she would manually add in the school choice money and the money that we use from the other revolving funds towards the general budget. And she, right, wrong, or indifferent, she didn't apply that in the general ledger. So what Dan is saying is right now, the general fund, general ledger is not tying out to the budget that we voted. But if he puts all of the funds together, it will tie out. He has not had the opportunity to do that. So that's what he's saying, is that right now, what's in the general ledger does not tie to the budget that we voted. So it needs to be cleaned up. That is correct.
Yes.
Do you want the other people to answer that, too?
No, it was just a point of clarification on the dialogue between you and Peg. Can I ask a real question, maybe, or should I be quiet for a while?
You should be quiet for a little while. We really want someone else to answer. Did either of you want to respond to the challenges of being busy?
I don't really have any confidence.
Just want to give you the opportunity. James?
I will say that I was quite happy to see the finance director was able to speak so competently on the issues, and identifying issues and reporting them up to the appropriate authorities where necessary.
Pete?
Yeah, I'm Pete Hoser. So the Mass Association of School Committees outlines responsibilities for the school committee. And under the category of finance, there are three areas that they will list. Review and approve the budget for education in the district. Work to ensure that necessary funds are appropriated for the district. And then oversee the operation of the annual school budget. So with respect to what was announced on the October 8th school committee meeting, not just the budget shortfall, not just the non-paid bills, including the 403B contributions that the employees had made for their retirement, including the insurance payments, including overtime pay or additional pay for teachers and staff who had done extra duties. I'm wondering what you view as the role of the school committee in overseeing the operation of the annual budget?
Beth, you want to take it?
Not really. Thanks, Pete. I don't know what I don't know. I'm not on school committee. I paid attention to the best of my ability. I haven't been trained on anything yet. I think that there's been a lot of chaos and lack of continuity with turnover and employees. All I can say is that I hope going forward that the current people being put in place, from what I've seen from the meetings that I've gone to and watched the interview process, they seem competent. They seem solid. I like their backgrounds, and I hope that they will stay long enough where they can be overseen to do a good job.
Yes, I would agree that the interim people seem competent and solid and capable of doing the job. But hiring people seems to be an area where this board has struggled traditionally. It would be nice to see an exit from the school district that doesn't threaten lawsuits. That there were unpaid health insurance premiums, unpaid, you know, retirement contributions that really affect the lives of our employees, I think is shocking. It made me angry that the board and then says, "Well, we, you know, we can't pay people directly. We only hire." And, okay, then you've hired poorly and are supervising poorly if this is the outcome. If the outcome is unpaid bills for months, you're supervising poorly.
So I think the question was, what do you, how do you view this committee's role in budget, overseeing the budget? So historically, whenever, we set the budget at the beginning of the year, and it's not set by the committee, because we do not have access to the general ledger. And that's a security feature, because if the committee could go in and make journal entries, and we have access, we approve everything, that would be a huge nightmare for segregation of duties. So what the committee's role is, is that the district comes forth and says, "This is what we need." They explain it. We approve it or decline it. It's the district's responsibility to make sure that they're accounting properly, paying the bills, doing the day-to-day operations. And the district would come forth with anything like, "Hey, we don't have enough money to buy paper. We need more money for paper. We need to transfer money from this fund to another fund." So schools are not-for-profits. They use fund accounting systems, and we have money in different buckets. And when the money needs to be transferred or something in the budget changes, that would be when the district goes and says, "Hey, school committee, can we have your permission?" I am on the same page as everybody sitting up here. The amount of anger, frustration, just disappointment in what has been going on. I feel it myself. But again, and if these people sitting on the committee, there are laws in place about what the committee is allowed to do and not allowed to do, and we have to stay within our bounds.
Rachel?
So I'm going to also mention, I'm Rachel Workheimer. I'm actually a writing candidate from the Berlin side for school committee. I unfortunately did not get quite enough signatures turned in to be up there. But one of the things I am running, and the reason I'm running for it, and I have a question for everyone else, is one of the major issues I heard during the Berlin town meeting where the budget failed was the lack of transparency about what is the money for. The constant comment I was hearing in the back of the gym was, "You're giving us a number, but not specifics. What would you do towards making that more transparent?" As we ended up getting a more detailed budget from Mrs. Costello a few weeks later, but that was a little later than that.
For the upcoming year, I think the number-one lesson learned is to start earlier. And we do have, there is a budget forum. It's in March, and there is information that goes out with it. But a huge lesson learned this year, just because we're doing this at the school committee budget forum doesn't mean that the people in the town are actually getting that information. So I think we need to figure out a way to distribute that information to the voters ahead of time. And it needs to be clear, and it needs to be formatted as such that everybody can understand it, not just the finance people. We actually just hired, did hire a permanent full-time finance director. I'm really excited about the hire. He's extremely experienced. He's extremely competent. I think he's going to bring a lot of these missing pieces together for the budget to this district.
What I had noticed with the presentation at last year's budget meeting is that the way it was being presented was not in a format that had a lot of detail. Like even at the meeting, it didn't have a lot of details. It was like a slideshow. It didn't have the breakdown. It wasn't readable. And then even when it came to the point of like, saying, "Well, we'll distribute it to you," it was vague. It wasn't appropriate. It wasn't, I think we need to have, going forward with the new finance director, we need to have a standard for, even if he left three days after he starts, the standard is always going to be, "This is how we present. This is how we budget. This is how," it has to be a standardized expectation, not how he would like to do it, but this is the expectation from the committee that you present every year the same way. So that they can, and I think Kristin mentioned at the joint meeting that she wasn't able to compare the numbers from like the previous years to this year, because it wasn't presented the same way. And it'll be easier across the board if every year we do it the exact same way.
Yes, I agree. Having seen videos of the Berlin budget process, I agree. It was rather opaque and almost as if it was designed to obfuscate. Having seen budgets from prior to regionalization, there was much greater detail, certainly in the Boyleston budget that was submitted to the town. Why the formats were changed, I certainly can't speak to. But there has been a change between before and after regionalization that made things less transparent. And when challenged, I felt the response from the district was defensive and to obfuscate, and to say, "This is all there is," and vote it yes or no, which did not feel like an appropriate response from an elected body.
Anybody there? Sue?
Away from the budget. But I am going to date myself and say that I was involved in the Berlin School Council when school choice was first brought in. So I have a little knowledge there, but it's very old. I did watch the April meeting, when the school committee did discuss school choice. And I found the discussion to be divisive and very fear-driven. I also brought in, or I felt that some of the topics that were being used to argue one way or the other really have, they do not factor into school choice. So I would like to hear from the three of you, your thoughts on the school choice program. And I believe, if I have watched the meeting... And I believe, if I have watched the meetings, I looked for some minutes and couldn't find them, if it's still zero or if there are some openings in school choice. So I would just like to hear your opinion on the school choice program.
I'm personally a huge proponent. I like school choice. I am very disappointed that it was voted down several times. My understanding is that there were zero seats added to BMS, zero seats added to Tohoto, but they did add seats to BES, which I find inequitable. I think my son's class in sixth grade is unusually small, could really use a couple of extra bodies. And I think it suits everyone to open up school choice. I think it's what keeps this school going. It's, once, when we merge at Tohoto, it's a perfect opportunity to be opening up school choice. My daughter's class, my daughter's a junior, she's still finding out that kids that she thought were from Boylston are actually from Worcester, they're from Clinton, like everyone, it's a huge melting pot once you get to Tohoto, there's no difference, it doesn't matter what town you came from. It's a, it's a missed opportunity in my book, it's missed money on the table in my book. And I'm a huge advocate for it.
I would say that I agree with you completely. I am also a proponent of school choice. So much of the costs that are involved in sort of funding our schools are fixed. They are not incremental, so they do not, you know, increment with each additional student. And I think we are leaving money on the table, certainly in the costs or the reimbursements we receive from the sending districts. And also, we're not fully utilizing the facilities that we have available by leaving spaces vacant.
I, I think that the school choice program that we have in place is great. I think we just got, so today, or last week, we just got a census reporter, it's NEASDEC. It's a, essentially, it shows population growth. And we are very close to capacity in Berlin Memorial, and I think that's why we didn't add seats. Tohoto is getting there. I think we can comfortably fit about 100 kids per class, that's from the principal. So I think that as we're looking at adding school choice seats, we have to be mindful of that. The other thing is, for each school choice child, we get $5,000 from the sending town. It might cost more, it might cost less, we have no idea. It depends on if the child has any type of extra needs, it depends on, you know, multiple factors. So I agree, if there's space in the class and if we're just looking at fixed costs, it could be a profitable thing. The school committee asked the district multiple times for a cost-benefit analysis so that we could make a decision based on an analysis. They were unable to provide that this summer. I am confident that next year we will have such analysis. And that coupled with the census and the population growth, I think the group will hopefully be able to make a good decision. But we do have to make sure that we're meeting the needs for the children that live within these two towns. And believe it or not, we are growing.
I just have a clarifying question on what was said, that we receive $5,000 for every student, but given the needs that they might cost us. I did look up the law, and in case it's changed, I thought that the town of where the child is coming from had to pay for their services. So if that's incorrect, I'm curious of where you're getting that information. Also, I thought school choice, you could vote every year on the number of seats. So meaning that if we aren't currently at capacity, why can't we add seats now? Why are we basing the decision on growth that may be happening or growth that's happening at Berlin that's not quite there at Tohoto?
So for the needs, you, I don't think you get money from the sending district, you'll get a piece of money from the state, I believe?
Well, they pay for it, right? So if the child comes from Clinton and needs language services or needs ESL, that Clinton then needs to pay for the ESL services that that child receives.
That was not my understanding, but I could be wrong.
I have looked into the law, so I can send it to the board so that you guys are educated, but that is as of the law from the state currently.
Actually, could you say your name?
Jamie Meldon.
Jamie Meldon, so that we just have it for the record, so she'll get information.
Okay. And then the second part of the question is, yes, you can add seats at any time. We usually add them in May so that they would come in at the beginning of the school year because not a lot of people want to make a move in the middle of the year. But the thing with school choice is, once you add a spot, then that spot is there forever. You can't throw the kid out of the school. So if we have growth in the towns, like people move in, like if you add 20 sixth graders, and then you get a flux of growth in five years and those kids are still in 11th grade, you cannot throw those kids, the way the rule is made, you can't throw those kids out of school. So then you potentially could have a capacity issue. It's definitely a tricky what-if situation.
Thank you, Megan. Beth and Jamie?
I emailed Desi, and I confirmed that the sending district is responsible for any excess funds for services. They take it out of the sending district's funds when they receive their funds at the end of the year from the state for their special ed funds. It gets initially sent, I believe, to the sending district, and then it gets taken back. So we are, there could definitely be circumstances where maybe the receiving district ends up spending money on a student because they're trying to determine if they were, should be receiving services, and then they decide that they didn't need services. And yes, the receiving district could be out that money. But I, I don't know that that is a good reason not to be adding seats. I would also like to point out that between eighth and ninth grade, every year, Tohoto loses 15 to 20 kids to Assabet, St. John's, St. Mark's, lots of Notre Dame, every year. It consistently happens. And I think adding five seats to a sixth grade class or seventh grade class, I don't think there's a lot of danger there. I think the majority of movement that comes around with people moving their families is happening at the younger ages. I don't think there's a danger of 20 sixth graders coming into a district.
I am also reliably informed that the sending district pays for special services, and so that our district would not be out of pocket for that. And I would agree, I've seen the same numbers with Tohoto, that we lose students to lots of places, arguably for very valid reasons, nice programs at Assabet and other places. But certainly, we should have the capacity to support some additional school choice vacancies.
Admiral from Boylston, I'd like to hear the candidates' opinions on ballot question number two, which if passed would eliminate the requirement that 10th graders have to pass the MCAS exam to graduate from high school.
Did everybody hear that question?
I can repeat it.
Okay.
So I'm looking for the candidates' opinion on ballot question two, which if passed would eliminate the requirement to pass the MCAS test in order to graduate from high school.
I'll say that I, I haven't read much either pro or con, so I don't know what the argument for eliminating the requirement is. It's my understanding, though, that this would not eliminate MCAS, that the state would continue to use MCAS as an assessment tool in schools, but only remove it as a requirement for graduation. I'm not sure I see a good argument for removing it as a requirement for graduation. Certainly, I think graduation, there should be some statewide bar set. I'm not convinced that this should be the bar, but it's the bar that we have at the moment. So I would be opposed to measure two. I would look to retain it.
I also don't, I don't necessarily think that the current plan that we have in place is the best plan, but I don't want to see it completely wiped out without a new plan in place. I had looked up information on it, and the pre-COVID years, 99% of the students were passing it. I think that if 1% is not passing it, I don't know that there's work that needs to be done in that 1%, I don't need, don't need to throw out the entire system. And I think at this point in time, we're still seeing decline, like we're still seeing the COVID deficits, and I don't want to like, get rid of the standard where we're measuring from at this point. Like, I don't think it's a good time to make changes to something where we're trying to improve the numbers, our baseline numbers, we need to be able to reference back to. And I don't think this is the point in time to do that. I agree with what both James and Beth said. I think it's so much more complicated than a yes or a no. I think that we need some type of bar or level of measurement for multiple reasons. But as to whether or not the MCAS is a perfect way to determine if a child is ready to graduate from high school, I'm not 100% sure that that is the measure. But this probably is not the time to make a change. So I think I agree, I would at least say no would be the answer, right?
Shirley?
I would make one comment on that. My name is Charlene Calagero, I live here in Berlin. And I worked for over a decade at Leslie University in educational research, particularly K through A, but I also was familiar with the research. And I will tell you that standardized tests have been a tremendous waste of time and money, time including classroom teaching and learning time. So I would love to see the MCAS go away. But besides that, I would like to hear each of your views on what is the single most important factor that influences student achievement?
There we go, from the specific to the grand philosophy. Thank you, Charlene.
Not grand philosophy, data.
Data, there we go.
Data. What, what goes on, how, you know, how can you predict that, that any given student will, you know, pass whatever assessment, whether it's MCAS or anything else? What is the single most important factor?
Do you mean in our district or in general?
In general.
I, I think that, from what I've read, I think a lot of it has to do with income. As far as, you know, if you're talking about the MCAS, and there's been links to, you know, students that come from higher-income households and districts that have higher-income, you know, families, they tend to do better on the MCAS. I don't know that I agree.
This sounds like a very good argument for getting rid of it.
I don't know if that's what you were trying to get at. If you were trying to...
Well, you made the argument for somebody, but, um, yes, I'd like to hear from the other, the other candidates.
Well, I, I brought the palette from, with the questions on it, and it did use Boston, the largest district in the state with the highest percentage of low-income students. And students of color, only seven in the class failed to graduate, only for the reason of the MCAS out of 700 students. So I don't, I think that certain, like socioeconomic status certainly plays a role. I think supportive teachers that are engaged, that's a huge factor. I think we have great teachers at Tohoto and BMS and BES. Good teachers that are engaging students is our best.
I think Beth largely gets it right with engaging teachers. Having an education professional in the classroom that is engaged and able to teach while not being encumbered or overly encumbered by the curriculum that is voiced upon them often, I think is the, the single greatest thing you can do for a student, is to give them an excellent teacher. I will say that I'm not an MCAS proponent, you know, I, I think it's probably not a great exam in terms of diagnostic power. I, I would like to, you know, chat with the psychometricians that have gone through the questions and determined the validity. But it's the exam that we have, such as it is.
So let me, let me follow up, you did pretty good, actually. So yes, on the one hand, SES, socioeconomic status, is the single most important factor in how a student does in our schools. But of the school factors, so in other words, the stuff that you all are engaged with, the teacher in the classroom is the most important factor. Now, the important thing about this, now, somebody's mentioned that there's now literacy coaches, and what else?
A math coach.
Math coach.
At the elementary level.
And so within that, teachers, I like what somebody once said that I heard was, you know, teaching isn't rocket science, it's hard. It's actually hard to deal with 20 or 30 kids, every one of whom has different strengths and needs. But part of the way that you get good teachers, it's an incredibly complex profession and practice, is to have continuous, valid professional development. How would you support the professional development?
Great, so questions. How would you support professional development?
I would be keen to ensure that the professional development days that we send the teachers to are useful and engaging for the teachers, that they have validated programs that have evidence for their effectiveness, and that if we run them for more than one year, that they have received good evaluations from the teachers that were through the program the previous year.
This year, to my understanding, they recently just changed the whole process for professional development. They're doing them more regularly, and they're doing half-days instead. So they're, they're more regularly, could be, and I believe it was Mrs. Costello who encouraged this. She said that there was a lot of information that said that the teachers benefited from it if they had them more regularly. So I think that at the end of this year, it'll be really interesting to get the feedback and decide. I think at that point, it will be really interesting to see if it works, basically, if it's a learning year, I think.
And do you know what the coaches do?
So Charlene, you don't get any more questions. Sorry, thank you. Everybody gets one question. Yeah, Megan gets to answer that, but I just was, sorry.
So for the PD days, I think the, believe it or not, there's a ton of great resources through the state, MASC, MARs. And I think that the district should lean on those resources to make sure that we are employing the best professional development for our teachers. That's one thing. The second thing is obviously having the time to do it. I don't know that necessarily the half-days are the best thing because it's a very short period of time. But we do need to kind of figure out, like Beth said, this is a learning year. We've added a bunch of half-days, they're, most of them are on Wednesdays. I know that's kind of a pain for parents. So I think for next year, we kind of need to assess how successful this was, and then probably if people want to keep the half-day thing, maybe move them to Fridays or figure out timing, that would be beneficial. Maybe do a few full-days instead of so many half-days. But I think we have to wait and see how this year goes.
You're in the rocking chair.
All right. I'm Jessica Dangalberti, I'm on the school committee for the last two years. During the last election, there was great rumor about a member who was running who had a student not in the district. And so I was wondering if you could comment on your reasons for having your students in the district while respecting their privacy, if you can, and why or whatnot.
Thanks, Jess. So I have two kids in the district, and we actually started at the Tohoto preschool. And my husband and I looked at probably no short of 10 preschools in the area because I was very picky. I was home with my kids. And I fell head over heels in love with Mrs. McQueen and Mrs. Blaze. I just felt that the school itself was amazing, the teachers were amazing. I loved that the high school kids could come into the classroom and work with the kids. I just, I felt that my kids were safe and taken care of. And then after preschool, they continued out to Boylston Elementary School where Mr. Thompson was the principal, and now we have Mrs. Sykes there. And I just, I have that... And I just, I have that same feeling. I just feel like my kids are taken care of, they're safe, and they're learning. Not only the principals, but the amazing teachers we have in this district are just completely the reason why I continue to keep my kids in this district. I think they're getting an amazing education from Boylston Elementary School, and I wouldn't put them anywhere else.
Like I said in my introduction, we moved here for the schools. I love the schools. We love the small schools, although I feel like some of the grades could be a little bit bigger. But we do appreciate the small schools, the small classes, the teachers. I wouldn't put my kids in another, in a private school or another district at this point because this is, we moved here for these schools. We think that they're great. My kids have benefited greatly from them. Like I said, my son received services that he most likely would not have been eligible for in Leominster Public Schools. He would have been very low on the priority list. He was advocated for, and I am forever grateful for that.
I have four children. When we moved to Boylston, we started Jacob in the Tohoto preschool. He was followed by Anton and Charlotte in the Tohoto preschool. William, Jacob, and Anton all then attended Boylston Elementary School until last year, when as a family, we made a decision to start homeschooling all of the children. I am fortunate and blessed that I have an extremely intelligent and capable wife who is at home full-time and who is able to do this for our family.
Okay, so I'm not a parent, I'm not an educator, but I have since I've started working back in town. I've spent two years working with current and recent Tohoto graduates. I have them as customers in the store. And of course, as someone active in town, I have friends who have kids in the district. And so bullying is something that is always a problem for all time, not going to be eliminated. But when I hear it come up as a conversation with kids or parents, oftentimes I'm hearing that it is not being addressed well in the school, whatever efforts they've tried to have, deal with this issue have not resolved well. And so I'd kind of ask you in a more general sense, if a parent came to you and said, "Look, I've tried to deal with this in the school and it's not been dealt with," how would you, as the oversight of the superintendent and all that, seek to address such concerns?
So having not been on the school committee, I have been told, and that should sort of answer your question, but my understanding is that you were supposed to redirect the parent back to the chain of, right? So you can listen to the complaint and you can look into what the policy should be and you can maybe direct them towards the correct policies and have them go back to, but they need to start at the school level, right? Am I in the right page here? Obviously, it's unacceptable, but my understanding is the role of school committee is not to leapfrog over the chain of command. I don't know if that answers your question.
I believe that is correct, that we wouldn't be able to leapfrog over the chain of command. The parent should address the issue with the appropriate principal. And if they don't achieve satisfaction there, then escalate to the superintendent. I would think at some point, it would probably be appropriate, if the issue persisted, that the board should request a report from the superintendent as to the nature or depth of this issue in any of the schools. I have heard similar complaints, though, from other parents in town, that there is inadequate resolution for bullying complaints, whether that happens on the playground or the school bus.
Yeah, so exactly what they said, there's a chain of command. The first step is to make sure that the parent has spoken with the principal. And if the principal is not taking care of the issue, then it goes to the superintendent. Again, there's policy and laws around bullying, and everybody has to adhere to them. Obviously, if it's an issue where the superintendent is ignoring the issue, which I don't think would happen, at least not right now with the current superintendent we have, and then it would go to the committee.
Hi, my name's Tara. I've been new to the district for a couple of years now and have kindergarten in the schools. And I guess hearing each of you talk about why you would want to have your children in the school or not made me think, often we don't go into a position like this without some sort of impetus for change or change that we're hoping to see or hoping to bring about. So what is something that you are hoping to, what is a change you are hoping to affect by being a member of the school committee?
So I think a goal for the current year is more transparency around the budget process. It's hard to make personal goals because the committee is one body and we act as a group, so as individuals, one person has absolutely no power. It's the group. Another thing is I think there is, I think Tohoto has made great strides since we've been part of the district, but I see lots of room for improvement there. So I think we've brought in a new assistant principal. Sounds like the culture is changing in the right direction, but I think another goal would be to continue to move that school forward. I think there's just so much opportunity at that school. And maybe adding programs and making sure there's enough for all of the kids.
Like I said in my introduction, one thing that I would really like to see is the rebuilding of the relationship and the trust between the school committee and the towns. I think it's going to take a while. I think it's been a really rough two years. That's something that I personally am driven for. And the same with Megan. I remember at a meeting maybe two years ago, Mr. Campbell being asked his opinion about the state of the elementary schools. And he said, "The elementary schools are in great shape. Tohoto is ready to take the next step." I would really love to see us putting more energy and pride into Tohoto. It's really easy to pay attention to BES and BMS because then you can rally the troops around your school. Tohoto is our school. I'd like to see more pride in Tohoto.
When I was in school, we called it spirit, school spirit. And certainly, I think that's something that all the schools could use more of, is school spirit and the traditional sense of school spirit. But my only reasons for running were around transparency and engagement with the towns and the budget process. A personal goal of mine would be to ensure that all the bills are paid on time. How I'd be able to affect that goal on the board, I mean, I can be loud and obnoxious, but the board is the board.
Peggy wants to ask a second question. Here you go.
Question. I'd like to know how the candidates feel about cellphone usage in the schools.
I would be opposed to cellphone usage in the schools, along with pagers and probably most other electronic devices.
I would love to see the cell phones and pouches. I think that they are not helping anybody. I think they are a distraction. They are a tool for babysitting in some parts of the day. I would love to see the phones and pouches. I think it would be a relief to the kids after, might take a couple of weeks, but I think that they would appreciate, it would be nice to see the kids. They're not allowed to use them at the middle school. They're not allowed to use them at the elementary school. They are allowed to have them on their person at the high school. And the difference between lunch in the middle school and lunch for the high school is a lack of conversation. And I think putting the phones away would be helpful.
I had the opportunity, one to point last year, a sub in the cafeteria at the high school, and it was horrific. I watched the kids just sitting on their phones, not even talking to each other. It was really sad. I am completely in favor of a policy that would make it so that cellphone usage was banned during the day. I like the idea of the pouches. They cost money.
All right, we have, anybody that hasn't asked a question in the background?
I have a special question for them. Any more questions? Could you just remind us, how many people are running and how many people run the school committee and how many are there for, you know, they're not going to get elected. And actually, what's all the candidates and how many people are potentially elected?
Okay, let's see if I can answer that. Maybe Megan has to answer.
So there's currently six people on the school committee. There's three from Boylston and three from Berlin, okay? And in Boylston, my seat is up, so there's two people running for one seat. In Berlin, there are two seats up, and there are two people going for those seats. One of those people is not here tonight. That's Lisa Mayer, and Beth is going for the other seat. Julie Lee was on the school committee, and she decided not to run.
So we, in Berlin, you know, we vote for people from Berlin side and the people of Boylston. Who vote for either?
You vote for everybody. So even though I couldn't run against, I'm a Boylston resident, I couldn't run against Beth or Lisa. I run against people from Boylston, but both towns vote for both towns, if that makes sense. Super confusing.
Could you make a little more of it?
Okay. So, do you get it? James lives in Boylston, so only somebody from Boylston can run against me. If somebody else in Berlin stood up and said, let's say Peg says, "I'm going to run against you, Megan," she couldn't, she lives in Berlin. The seats, we have to maintain the three Boylston versus three Berlin. And when a Boylston seat is up, another Boylston person has to run. Only Boylston people can run for those seats.
And you're getting on a four-year schedule.
It's a four-year schedule. We're on a four-year schedule. So this term is for four years. In two years, there's three more seats up. It will be two Boylston seats and one Berlin seat.
Peggy, could I just?
Yeah, go ahead, Lauren.
My name is Lori Hart. I am on the school committee. I am the district clerk. I am in charge of making sure everything gets on the ballot correctly. So the way it's going to work is every two years, there will be a school committee election. This year, you're voting for two members on the Berlin school committee and one member on the BBRSD. Two people from Berlin, one person from Boylston. We happen to have two people from Boylston who are vying for the one seat in Boylston and two people in Berlin that are vying for two seats. Oh, and a Biden, that is, they're vying for the two seats that are up for election in Berlin. Two years from now, there will be two seats in Boylston, one seat in Berlin, flip-flop every two years. And everybody from Berlin and Boylston will vote for Berlin and Boylston people regardless of your town. So when I go in to vote, I will vote for people from Boylston and I will vote for people from Berlin because it's the BBRSD, one district.
But the results have to be, again, that we're three from Berlin and three from Boylston.
So there's already three that are on the school committee currently. In Berlin, there's two in Boylston, Jessica Deggel-Berdy and myself. And then Michael Totten is from Berlin. We're all from Boylston, Berlin. These people are up for election this year. In two years, our seats will be up for election. So it'll just flip-flop every two years, kind of like the summer and the winter elections.
All right, I think we're coming to the end. Unless there's anybody that wanted a first-time question, because I think we, back one more and then we'll call of the day.
The time we called here, and I know of so many meetings last year, or maybe earlier this year, that the committee wanted to, one of the lists of books being read in the classrooms or used in the classrooms and also available in the library is, and is it, my understanding correct, that the school committee is reviewing that? Or am I asking the professionals who are teaching, running the library, what books are appropriate?
Okay, so that's sort of a specific question, but can you all answer that question? Or Todd?
It's my understanding that that went through the policy subcommittee. I don't, did it ever make it to the, I don't believe it ever made it to the actual school committee floor. It was brought up at a subcommittee meeting, and Megan is not on the policy subcommittee, and neither one of us are on the school committee at all. I would say I wouldn't agree with that. I wouldn't want to see anyone asking for a list of books to review. I don't think that's the role of the school committee.
I would agree that I feel it's certainly inappropriate for the school committee to request a list of books that are being used in the classroom in advance. I would think that we should be trusting our education professionals enough to be using educational materials that are appropriate for the age groups in the classrooms. And they should really know their students best. If there is a rogue practitioner, as it were, I would expect that to be handled via the normal parent complaint process.
Essentially, the school committee is essentially responsible for curriculum materials, which may include books. But it's up to the principal and the superintendent to decide what materials are in place at the schools. I don't think a list was ever requested. I think it was just a, huh, is the school committee actually responsible for this? The way it's written in policy, the school committee is essentially responsible for all curriculum materials and books. No list was ever generated. I don't, I don't think, I think everybody trusts the principals and librarians that are in place to make sure that whatever's offered in the school is appropriate.
A note, did you agree? Make a point of clarification on that conversation. I think it's an important one. Thank you. I mean, I never asked my question. I did the clarification on Peg's question, so.
Oh, okay. Your first question there? Okay.
Worked with me here. Okay, on Megan's last comment, I heard the candidates all speak to this, that it's inappropriate for the school committee to step into this role. But I watched the September, let me get the date right, September 26, 2023, a school committee meeting, discussion of the district's KEC policy. I went and studied the policy and looked at it after watching it. The school committee required the superintendent, Costello, to generate lists of all books and materials in use by teachers for the school committee review. And this action was taken by the school committee in the absence of any formal written complaint directed to an identified book or other material, which is what the KEC policy holds. So we, in fact, had this happen last September. I raised an alarm. I got a prompt response from Megan, "Thank you." She said she'd review it with counsel. Apparently, did. Then I get a follow-up with a note, a comment that this is, it's ultimately, the school committee is ultimately responsible for library books and materials. You know, we spoke earlier about the statutory authorization, what the school committee is authorized to do, three things. I don't see this in there, and I don't see it in our policy. So to put it in the form of a question, Eddie, per your request, are we going to do this again? And did those lists ever get generated? That's a question for Megan, I'm sorry. But there it is. We did it last September in this district.
As far as the list goes, if one was created, I don't recall seeing it. September 2023, I was not the chair, so I don't know what, maybe I did respond, maybe I was helping. I was vice chair. Sorry, Mary, what was the other part of that?
Well, actually, Megan, you were the chair because I asked, I raised the concern in November, and at that point, you were just as soon as the chair.
Oh, okay, all right.
So, you know, what are we going to do going forward? Is this very clear that we're not going to do this going forward? Or does anybody have a desire in the school committee? I'll put it out to the entire community, the chair and the attendants.
Well, we can't elaborate right here, but personally, I am comfortable with the current principal, superintendent, librarians we have placed. I think they're all great.
I said before, I would strongly oppose that, and I would have no problem verbalizing that in the meeting.
As I said in my previous comments, I think it would be inappropriate for the school committee to generate such a list or request it, such a list be generated in advance of a specific parent complaint about a specific material.
Okay, so I think we're clear on that. Thank you all for coming. I am really grateful to these three candidates.
Clarify, Mary.
Clarify, clarify, clarify.
Yeah, well, it's important. The question about a list of books came up in a passing conversation in a discussion about new curriculum that would be allowed. It was taken way out of context. There was never any intent to review or remove books. It was a passing conversation between Lori, myself, and the superintendent during a policy meeting. And it was taken out of context. It may have been discussed a little further for clarification purposes. There was never an intent, there was never even an attempt. There was never an intent, there was never even an attempt to review a list or remove anything. So I just wanted to make sure that's clear. Unfortunately, two of the candidates on stage were never part of that, so it's not really fair to put that question to them for specific things, as mentioned at the beginning, in a forum like this. So that's unfortunate.
Thank you. I think we heard pretty clearly that what they would do in the future, right, from all of them, and I think that's what we're really looking for, is to, if you're in this position, what will you do? And I think they all pretty much said the same thing, right? Right, at least that's what I heard. Thank you. All right, so I'm going to end this question and answer period, and we're so grateful for these three candidates for spending their time in front of all of us, being nervous about what kind of questions were coming, and you did very well. Thank you so much.